I call this meeting to interview Ward Five candidates to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Here.
Buffalo.
Here.
Clanton.
Here.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
And Martin.
Present. Thank you. Ms. Tanner, will you be escorting the candidates in? Or is someone else doing that?
Mr. Mackey is present.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Mackey. I'm from Ward Five.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So we have a list of questions. Each one of us are going to ask you a question.
Okay.
The entire interview, we have six questions. The entire interview should last about 30 minutes, so I want to make sure you know that so that you can be aware of your answer, the time that you're allotting for your answers, okay?
Thank you.
All right. You ready to begin? Do you want to have him introduce himself? He just did.
Okay.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll start with Ms. Basine.
Hey. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
All right, so we're going to start with the first question. All right, so the board has adopted a five-year strategic plan and recently five highly-focused board and superintendent goals. What is your role as a school board member in ensuring that these goals are met?
Thank you for your question. My role would be, and something that I've always prided myself on, is being a community member. I have been a soccer coach in Norfolk at Northview Middle School, I'm sorry, at Northside Middle School, also at Norview. I've been a soccer coach in Norfolk, at Norfolk Soccer Club, and for a few years, along with my son. And I also have friends in the community, my friends who run the mayor, Andy Pergiro is also a friend. And I would like to strengthen the community relations is something that I would really like to do. And to be there for our community, to have more of a face in the community, so that the community knows who I am, so that I can assist them and answer any questions and be an advocate for anyone in my ward.
Okay, thank you. And also, there's, you can use that pencil and paper there if you need to.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
You're welcome.
Up next, we have Ms. Moore Buffalo.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mackey.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
I'm going to read you a question too, which states, what do you see as the major issue facing Norfolk Public Schools District? What changes would you recommend?
My children, all three of them are Granby High School graduates, and many of their friends of all different races and sexes, which was, which was great for me to meet. I would really like to attempt, and I know this would be very hard, is to change the mindset of the people of Norfolk. Put education first. Put family first. My family, last night, I have two college graduates living at home. We ate dinner, no cell phones, and no television, just like we've been doing since they were children. And I would really like to change the mindset, to let people know that this is the way we can all move forward, whether, and we've had friends of my children sit and eat dinner with us, they follow the same rules as my children. Especially a lot of my youngest daughter's friends, she's at CNU, would come to the house and they would sit, and they were very surprised that we sat and ate dinner every night. And that's something that's very important, and it was important to us, and it was also very important to our children. And we could see that their friends appreciated also when they came and ate dinner with us. I didn't like all these children always eating and tearing up, tearing up our pantry, cleaning out our food, but it was great to impart on these children the way we raised our children, and how excellent it was to sit with mom and dad. We always did highs and lows that we got from a Bruce Willis movie, but we would do highs and lows of the day. And sometimes the low would be having to speak at dinner, but it was something that was very important to my wife and I, so this is something that we always did with our children. So I would really love to change the mindset of the people of Norfolk, that education is very important. And it doesn't have to be college education. There are many partnerships that Norfolk has, with shipyards, I work at Marmak in Norfolk. These are places, you can earn a very good living as a tradesman, coming straight out of high school, a couple of years as a journeyman, moving on to getting your masters in that specific trade, and you can make a very good living that you started and you didn't go to college. My son, who works for the shipyard in Portsmouth, he tells me all the time, he says, Dad, there's guys making more money than me, and they didn't go to college. And these guys work under him in the engineering department, so we need to change it and let people know you can make a good living without having to go to college.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, up next, we have Mr. Carlos Clanton.
Mr. Mackey.
Okay.
A question I have for you is to maximize student achievement and outcomes, what is your view on an ideal board member and the board as a whole's relationship with the superintendent? How will you demonstrate your responsibility in this relationship?
Okay, I believe for a relationship with the superintendent, it needs to be an open sup, it needs to be an open relationship. It needs to be someone where we can say, hey, this, this is a problem. And a good member, an excellent member, has different people from different backgrounds. I don't have an education background. I've been a substitute teacher three times. That's my education background, as far as with children, but I've been a coach. Now, obviously, a coach is not the same as being a teacher, but I've been a parent that is very much a teacher. And being a coach, I deal with children all the time. My biggest learning experience is at the beginning of a, a beginning of a soccer season, when I'm coaching 16, 17-year-old girls, and I'm learning the new words of the, of the year. And, no, Coach, you can't do that with your cellphone, let me show you how to do it with your cellphone. So all the things that we need to have as a board member is someone who's well-rounded and someone who can speak to. All types of people who've, who've been everything, like myself, I have three children, two were in advanced programs, one was at Meadowbrook, one was at Blair, and my youngest daughter has autism. So I absolutely found out, there's a very big difference between my son, who's ridiculously smart, and my daughter, who has autism and learns differently. So there were things that I had to myself learn. And I learned IEPs and IEP meetings and all these different things that she had to go through that my other two children didn't. So it would be good to have a board that has people from everywhere, all walks, people who have more, there absolutely, there has to be people who have been in the school system at some point in time. But to be in the school system, to be walking around, to be a regular person, who, people who are not afraid to talk to, as much as I am, an introvert, I don't have a problem talking to people. So we need to have people who have no problems and can speak and walk, talk and laugh and see them at the music in Ocean View on a Friday. Those are the types of things that I think we need to have as a school board, so that people, everyone can feel comfortable talking to anyone who's on the school board.
Mr. Mackey, I just want to make sure, because there's a second part of that question, and your relationship with the superintendent, how would you handle that? Did you?
Oh, I did, oh, it should be an open relationship. It should be one where we, where we can say, this superintendent, I'm sorry, this is a problem, and maybe this is how we can, this is how we can address this problem. Because we're, you know, we're reaching out, we're talking to people in all walks of life, all socioeconomic levels, so hey, maybe this is how we could do it. If it's just one way, then really, this, maybe the school board didn't look at it the right way, as far as communication goes. And maybe this is an avenue that we could use to reach it. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Up next, I have Noel Gabriel. Dr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Did you need to check his microphone real quick?
Yeah. Yeah, they've gone down considerably from what they were when we started.
It's on, right? The mic is down. Testing, one, two, three. Is it on?
Yes.
Testing, all right, there we go.
All right.
We have to start all over again.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Why do school systems exist, and what is the role of the school board member in that school system? And what is the role of the superintendent?
School systems exist, in my opinion, to make good humans, to, to have a well-rounded person when they leave high school, a good well-rounded person that has life skills, that can, you know, balance a checkbook, that can learn, whether it be at trade or whether it be in college. And I'm sorry, what's the second part of your question?
What is the role of the school board member and the superintendent in the reason for the existence of the school division?
Okay. The school board and the superintendent are, are here to foster. All right. We make and mold a system that helps our students become well-rounded, skillful, learning. I would, I would always say, learning, as I said before, learning adults. Because I, like I said, I learn every, at the beginning of every soccer season, I learned some, I'm in a learning process with these young ladies. I had a young lady that was non-binary, and I didn't even know what that meant. So I had to look it up and find out how, how non-binary was, what it meant. And I talked to her parents, I said, you know, I'm in my 50s, I'm, it's been a long time, you know, I might make a mistake. And I, but I, because I didn't want to alienate her in any way, and, and I didn't, she became, honestly, one of my favorites, because honestly, if I told this young lady to go out and cover cars in traffic on 264 at 4:45, she would have gone out on 264 in her cleats and covered cars, because that's what I asked her to do, because she was that great of a young lady. So we have to be, we have to teach that, learning does not end when you graduate from high school, or trade school, or college. It's a constant learning experience, which, which is what life is all about. I would hope that a school board and a superintendent could foster that, so that we can raise, raise and teach and foster young people, so that once they become adults, they can continue to learn, continue to foster that good, that good learning that they've learned at Norfolk Public Schools. And that, and that they can then take that and make a better society as a whole.
You're welcome. All right, I'm up next.
Mr. Rodney Jordan.
School boards represent the vision and values of the community. What does this mean to you, and how will you represent the vision and values of the community in your work if you are selected to serve on the school board?
Thank you for your question. Our community in, I live in Pinewall, in Ward Five. My wife and I lived on the other side of Norfolk, which is where we first started living, when we got our first house, when we moved here. Very different communities. The community, our community at Five Points was us and our neighbor. The community in Ward Five is very different. There's a lot of military, and we get together for holidays, Halloween, we didn't get to last night, we actually made, last night was our first time actually giving out candy at our home, because we would always go down the street and do it as a block, and all the kids would come through, and they would get their candy all at one time, they didn't have to stop, go to each individual house. So that's the kind of community that I would like to foster in, in Ward Five, and become more of a community, so that we all can say, hey, that's our child, not my child. You know, I know that, you know, it takes a village, is a very old saying, but it's very true. The young man who lived next door to us, his father was away in Bahrain, which is, which is where he works, and we took, I would take care of their snow removal, because I only did it once, and I got a new snow blower, so I really wanted to use it. So, but he took care of our grass while I was overseas and I was working. And when the young man was going to his first junior prom, I took him to get his first suit. I taught him how to tie a tie, I taught him how to iron his pockets square. Now, is that something that most neighbors do? No, but that's what a community does. He needed help, and I was there to help him. That's what we need as a, as a city, and as a community, as a ward, we need to realize we, we need to put our arms around these kids, and we need to help out, and we need to do as much for these children as we possibly can. And also, I appreciate it, because that's what other people did for my children when I was in the Navy, and I was out to sea. So that's what I feel we need to do, and how we can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So lastly, your last question, delivered by me. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What do you most want the school division to accomplish, and how will you measure whether the division accomplishes it?
I would want to see, as I said earlier, I would want to see better humans. I want to see children who are going forward, whether they be a welder, a doctor, a lawyer, or a painter. I always try to impress, if you're, as my father said, I don't care if you're a ditch digger, but you'd be the best digger in the ditch. And that's what we want from, from children, I want from my children, I'm very happy that they're doing something and they're going forward, but they're also learning as they're doing it. My daughter, who's, who's getting her teaching certification through Norfolk Public Schools at Mary Calcutt, it's a big learning, learning curve for her as she's teaching kindergarten. And it's beautiful to see my wife imparting wisdom upon her and other teachers, her mentor, who've come and helped her out, even before the school started, before the school year started, so that she could take that and go with it. I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
How will you measure whether the division accomplishes it?
Well, some ways we can measure by, in numbers, but I would rather measure it in the young people that we see. It's great to see, I meet young children who, I call them young children, who are now adults, especially the, the friends of my son, who's, who are, they're in jobs, they're working, they're, they're becoming a part, and they're paying taxes, they're becoming a part of the society that I've quote-unquote warned them about, as they say. So we can learn and see how our measures are going forward by the people that the students become. All my son's friends are Granby High graduates, and they come to the house and they talk, and, you know, it's great, one works in the political world, and another one works, he's a surveyor, and it's great to see how they're doing. And I, I think the more children that we see as adults, and what they're doing as adults, growing and becoming, as, as my wife always says, good humans, they're becoming good humans and adults, I think that's how we're going to measure it. We could always measure numbers, they say, okay, the graduation rate's gone up, that's great, but where are they going after that? Because we want to make sure, and we want to do our best to help them along the way. Just at high school graduation is not, we're not finished. Hey, I'm going on to Pipefitter School, I'm at the Newport New Shipyard, and I'm doing this, I'm becoming a plumber, I'm going to college. So the, so we need to make sure that not only are they getting through high school, but when they're done, they've got someplace to go, they've got something to look forward to, they've got something else really to do, and then, when they're done, then we can measure it, we can see that, how these children have done and what we've done to help them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Looking at the time, we have a few minutes, is there anything else you'd like to close with?
I, I'm very thankful and I appreciate being able to speak to you all today. I've seen a lot of you on television, or not, on the, on the computer, well, my wife watches the school board meetings, so I very much appreciate this. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I hope that I have the opportunity to serve with you and to help all of you and the city of Norfolk do their very best going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Tanner? 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 Let's see. My fraternity, Arts for Learning, which is a program that's already involved in the school district. And I'm just very active in our community.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with the questioning. And up first, we have Ms. Tanya Bastien.
All right. Welcome, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
All right, first question. So, the board has adopted a five-year strategic plan and recently, five highly focused board and superintendent goals. What is your role as a school board member in ensuring that these goals are met?
I think first and foremost is working in a collaborative fashion with the superintendent. Obviously, the board has the responsibility to set policy, to be engaged in making sure that we have the instructional program being administered in an appropriate and efficient fashion. I think the plan talks about excellence and equity. The two aren't mutually exclusive, obviously. And I would hope that the board would be very anxious to see that those strategies are in place on a regular basis. Clearly, your responsibility is to ensure that a budget is put together and it reflects the needs in the classroom and certainly, it's consistent with the policies that are set by the state and by the involvement of our local leaders. I think beyond that, with the issues that we have with safety in our schools, I think the board has to be involved in making sure that our schools are safe for staff and for students. I think overall, the responsibility of the board, in addition to those things, is to ensure that you have a competent and very directed superintendent that's attentive to the needs, not only, pardon me, of the community, but certainly being transparent, making sure that the goals are articulated in a fashion that the public can understand and certainly appreciate.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
Hi, your face looks familiar. I get that a lot. My question is, what do you see as the major issue facing Norfolk Public School District? What changes would you recommend?
Obviously, we're an urban district. We've never been fully funded to the extent that I think our kids and our community deserve. When we look at the disparity between what our neighboring school districts are receiving, particularly the suburban districts, compared with what we're receiving, that certainly is a challenge for us to continue to articulate the needs of our district. I think making sure that we can launch a program that's effective in improving student achievement. I've always had a goal to ensure that all of our kids, particularly at the early years, are reading on grade level and there are a number of initiatives across the country. I was just looking at a program earlier today from Mississippi where they have improved the grade level reading scores in a very dramatic fashion. I think the other thing that has always been of interest to me is to ensure that our kids, moving from middle school to high school, can be proficient in those advanced areas, particularly algebra. That has always been the gatekeeper. And without having the competency in math, you cannot move into those advanced courses in science. I've always had a desire to see an increase in our career tech initiatives. I think more than anything else, we have to take a look at why kids are opting to look for college as the only alternative to a career path that could lead into the military, but certainly a host of jobs that are available in career and tech, in the career and tech field. So I think for me, that would be an emphasis that I'd like to see the board focus on.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Mr. Carlos Clanton.
Dr. Jones, to maximize student achievement and outcomes, what is your view of an ideal board member and the board as a whole relationship with the superintendent? How will you demonstrate your responsibility in that relationship?
Well, I could sit here for the next 30 minutes talking about that relationship. I think for some reason, there has always been a misunderstanding about the role of a board when it's compared with the role of a councilperson. There's advocacy and constituent service that councilpeople, city council members have to perform. But I think collectively, the board has to serve as a unit. And you speak as one. And you have to work in a collaborative fashion that's transparent. And you have to be an advocate, not just for the school board, but also for the superintendent in terms of the kinds of initiatives that are underway. Obviously, you have the responsibility to evaluate and critique the role of the superintendent and the staff. But I think more than that, it has to be a tight unit where you're focused as a group in moving the agenda forward. Typically, with school boards, you run into adversarial relationships when individuals tend to want to go out and work independent of the board in solving issues in the community. And that's fine to have an open ear for those issues, but those issues should be brought back to the full board for consideration and determination as to how it should be resolved. Independent resolution tends to create friction among board members, at least in my 30-plus years of working with school boards. Those boards that are effective are ones that work as a unit and have that open dialogue with the superintendent and selecting a board chair and a co-chair that can serve as spokes, as the individuals that will speak for the board collectively.
Thank you. Up next, we have Dr. Noel Gabriel.
Good afternoon. Why do school systems exist and what is the role of the school board member in that school system? And what is the role of the superintendent?
Oh, why do school districts exist? To educate our students to the extent that they can move into adulthood, knowing full well that they're prepared for challenges that most of us can't even envision early on in their career, or at least in their experiences in school. The second part of the question, could you repeat that? The role of the superintendent?
What is the role of the school board member and the superintendent in the reason for the existence of school systems?
There's always a need to have leadership that's visionary and inspirational and certainly individuals that make up as board members to advocate for the community. More often than not, board members may not have the full pedagogical experiences that a superintendent would have. Most school board members are community leaders, individuals that have a passion for children first and foremost, wanting to see that the community is engaged in providing opportunities for their kids. The superintendent has to be able to articulate the practices and the pedagogy that's current, that's effective, and should be able to articulate that in a way that's not couched in a lot of educational jargon, but is expressed in such a way that people can get excited about where we're going and what challenges they have to encounter, but also come up with solutions that they think the community will buy into. It's a mixed bag in some ways because board members, I think, tend to reflect the needs of the children where the superintendent has to obviously concern his or herself with the students, but also understanding the needs of the adults, the staff, the support staff, custodians, bus drivers, certainly the teachers, the administrators. Board members have to be concerned about that, but I think the superintendent has to have more of a focus on those concerns, more so than board members. Not to dismiss the fact that board members should be concerned about those things, but that kind of interaction with support staff, first and foremost, comes through the relationship with the superintendent.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Rodney Jordan.
Good afternoon. School boards represent the vision and values of the community. What does this mean to you and how will you represent the vision and values of the community in your work if you are selected to serve on the school board?
Given the diversity that we find ourselves in here in Norfolk and quite honestly, in any urban setting, I think the school board, school board members have to be cognizant of that diversity and the mix of views that often conflict with one another. But you have to be able to be a good listener. You have to be someone who's open to change. I think more than that, school board members, in many ways, it's hard to describe because of the challenges that we face in education today because we have so many individuals, particularly in this current climate, that are advocating for things that often are inconsistent with what schools are formed to do. For example, we hear issues now about parent involvement and whether or not parents should have more of a say in the education of their children. I think board members have to be aware of that, but you have to be resolute in your feelings about what's best for those kids based on the information that you're garnering and you're receiving on a regular basis through the superintendent and through the staff. So trying to find that balance between advocating for those individuals that have a stake, their children, but also understanding the responsibilities that you have to ensure that those kids are in a safe environment and getting the best possible education that they can get. And that's a very difficult task because most board members serve as part-time. It's not a full-time job that you can devote all of your energies to that, so you have to find a balance. But more than that, I think for me, having been a superintendent in several districts, having a good working relationship with the mayor and with the city council and with, obviously, those representatives in Richmond, that they're able to understand that you're working in their best interest, the best interest in this case of the students and the city, but understanding the challenges that they have to confront, given the responsibilities that they have as elected officials. And there again is a balance in terms of how you structure your relationship with them so that you don't compromise your position, but yet you understand where they're coming from in many ways, which is a challenge, quite honestly.
Thank you very much. And then, this is your last question and I will deliver it. So, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. What do you most want the school division to accomplish and how will you measure whether the division accomplishes it?
I've always been a supporter of strategic planning. I think having goals and objectives and strategies that are data, and those issues have to be data-driven and there has to be a constant assessment of your progress, albeit incremental in many instances, but nevertheless, there should be progress. And you should be able to set some long-range as well as short-range goals and constantly evaluate whether or not you're on target. It's almost like creating what they call a critical path where you have designated points along a continuum and you can see whether or not you're making the progress based on that continuum that you've set. And planning in a strategic fashion more often than not will allow you to see if you're making progress. If not, go back to reassess what impediments exist and then try to address those impediments so that you can continue to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, well, we do have some time left. I think we started a little bit early, but we do have some time left. So, I want to offer you the opportunity to share any closing remarks, if you would.
For some reason, I feel a little bit nervous with this. I've never been on this end of the conversation before. Let me just say, I had some reticence about applying for this position only because there are short and long-range obligations, I think, for school board members that are elected. And I've given thought to whether or not I would want to, if I'm selected, to fulfill the timeframe associated with Lauren's, the time that she has based on her tenure. And whether or not there would be an opportunity for me to seek the position full-time. That's a decision that I have to make down the road in terms of being elected to a full term. The other concern that I had was, I've been associated with the public schools for the last, since I've been here, which has been almost 20 years. And I find myself more often than not, particularly in my civic league as well as Rotary, being an advocate for the district and also defending the school district. And my heart and soul has always been associated with what's best for this city and for the schools. And I think being on the school board would give me an opportunity to be able to communicate in a more specific fashion about the progress that we're making. We have some wonderful, wonderful staff members, some outstanding students, and more often than not, we don't hear those positive things being articulated in the community. Where I live, for example, we've had at least 15 or 20 new homes being built. I live in the area right across from Isaiah Gardens Middle School, and I don't see any buses coming into our neighborhood. And most of the families that attend our meetings that have kids, they send them to private schools. And when they ask me about what is it positive about the Norfolk schools, I find that I have to defend that. But I'm doing it from afar because I haven't been associated in the last almost 13 years in a direct fashion with the district. So it would give me an opportunity to really be more specific about the things, the good things that are happening in the schools. And also, explain to folks that this is an investment that we all are making through our tax dollars and that they should be concerned about the quality of the schools and get engaged. More often than not, when you talk to a person, particularly many of our elected officials, about concerns they have about the schools, the first question I would ask, when's the last time you've been in one of our schools? They haven't. And when you ask, what about the quality of teaching? And they said, well, you know, the teachers aren't doing this and they're not really prepared. Well, how many of you would advocate for your children to go into the profession? You may see one or two hands go up in a crowd of maybe 40 or 50 people. So unless you're willing to make that investment, and education has been part and parcel of my family, my entire, all of my family members for the most part, have some stake in education. So I think for me, being able to continue to contribute in a way that I've done in the past and that I can continue doing that would be fulfilling and I think that's one of the reasons I'm sitting here today.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Well, that concludes your interview.
Well, thank you.
I want to thank you for being here and we will let you know shortly what the result is.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing all of you again. Thank you.
I can tell you, we don't go 24 hours without discussing just how overwhelmed they are with the number of things that they have to provide. And so I would love to be able to be involved in how do we make things more efficient for the teachers on the ground because in the short term, we can't get more teachers in the door. Long-term, that would be something that would be need to look at. How do we get more people into our doors to provide these services to kids? But in the short-term, how do we make things more efficient so teachers can be providing what it is they were hired to do? And that's teach kids and take care of kids instead of being bogged down by a lot of red tape.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Carlos Clinton.
Got to turn my mic on. So, good afternoon. To maximize student achievement and outcomes, what is your view as an ideal, what is your view of an ideal board member and the board as a whole, its relationship with the superintendent? How will you demonstrate your responsibility in that relationship?
I would think that the, a successful board member has to do a couple of things. One, and one that's really near and dear to me, is just being a consensus builder. You need to be able to have a conversation with people even when you disagree. You need to be able to understand other perspectives, and that works both on the board and beyond that. So, part of it is getting all of the most important questions on the table, getting all the most important perspectives, so that you can make the best decisions with those policies before you and the best budgetary decisions that you can, so that the superintendent and the schools can do what they need to do. And that takes a lot of conversations, and so a successful board member would be good at doing that. And that's something that I had to do as a civically president. You might remember that there was a lot of conversations about bike lanes a number of years ago, and in Northside in particular with Granby Street down there, that was a hot-button topic. People had feelings. They had big feelings. And so, a lot of that was facilitating, and that's the number two, is being able to facilitate conversations. We had to sit down with the civically and say, okay, what is it that we need? And again, big feelings in that room. I was able to get them to split up into two groups, and both groups had to come up with pros and cons, and then present to us what were the pros and cons of what bike lanes would do in the current thing that we had in front of us. And the exciting part was that people who were extremely bike-friendly could see where the issues were in the plan, and people who were for it, who were against it, were the ones telling us some of the great things that bike lanes could bring. So, just facilitating that conversation is the biggest part of it. So, getting into the community to make sure the community is involved and informed, and that's something that the board is already doing very well. I've seen so many things that have come out that we didn't even have, I mean, just five, 10 years ago. But just keeping those conversations, those lines of communication open. And as to where that relates to the superintendent, at that point, you have the conversations on the table, you're having the conversations about policy and budgets, and you are trying to make sure that the right things are in place so the superintendent can do her job. And then, setting goals properly, so that you can monitor that, monitor that and see whether the superintendent and the schools are able to get what they need to do. And so, it's keeping that line of communication open to make sure that the superintendent knows what the goals are, reading the data, so we know what the goals should be, and just keeping everybody on task, so that at the end of the day, all of our schools are accredited and all of our students are getting resources that they need.
Thank you. All right. Up next, we have Dr. Noelle Gabriel.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Why do school systems exist, and what is the role of the school board member in that school system? And what is the role of the superintendent?
Schools are, I feel like someone's used this as a tagline. I'm pretty sure someone around here has at some point, but they're the cornerstone, right? You can't have an engaged populace unless they've been educated, unless they are ready to give back to the economy until they're ready, until they can, I mean, even just pay their electric bill. You can't have that without education in someplace, whether they're going on to college, whether they're going on to another career, whether they're going on to technical schools. Education provides, the school system provides that. They, and you can't have a successful, I would argue, you can't have a successful nation if you don't have that in place. The, I mean, the reality is, is we're looking in an economy right now that is getting technologically advanced very, very quickly. And that school system is what creates the students that can then go, or creates the graduates who then go on to take on the jobs that are going to help get our economy what it needs. And that's what the school does. And I'm repeating myself now because I feel very strongly that that's what public education is there to do, is to get people out into the world and be successful. And I'm missing the second half of your question. I'm sorry. Could you say it again?
What is the role of the school board member in that school system, and then the role of the superintendent?
I may have already said this before in my other answers, but it's making sure that the budget is set in a way that the resources can be allocated properly. It's understanding the data, so that you can assess that budget properly. It's setting those policies, so that you know that it's all in place. It's monitoring the superintendent to make sure that we're getting there and matching those goals, getting to, I lost track of my sentence, but that's really what they're there for. They're there to monitor and make sure that the schools are getting what they need and that we're equitably providing that to all the students, because not every student needs the same thing, not every school needs the same thing, not every teacher needs the same thing. And so, the board's job is to monitor that and keep track of it and to keep everything on track.
Thank you. Thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Rodney Jordan.
School boards represent the vision and values of the community. What does this mean to you? And how will you represent the vision and values of the community in your work if you are selected to serve on the school board?
I love Norfolk so much. As a graduate of Norfolk Public Schools myself, it is, we're a microcosm almost, when you look at other school systems. We are such a diverse population, and that has shaped so much of the way I navigate the world as a whole. And that's something very special that we offer to kids, is that you are surrounded by so many different walks of life, so many different political views, religious views, I mean, even just one neighborhood from another. There are so many different people that you interact with, and that's something very special that Norfolk offers. And so, within that, those community values are huge. You get to learn about different value systems on a day-to-day basis, and that's something that Norfolk does just because it exists, because of the city that we have. As a board member, I would, those are conversations I would want to facilitate. That's making sure that we're in the community and understanding what it is that they need from us, because when you work with a diverse population, everything's always changing. You're never going to understand everything, and if you go off of your gut or what you think might be the best thing, you might be missing a major issue, you might be missing a major data point, and you need to be in those conversations, because at the end of the day, you're not there to make the decision that you feel like might be the best thing. You need to reflect what the community needs from you. You need to make the decision that meets the values of those kids, meets the needs of those kids, and you can't do that without conversations. And that happens both on the board and abroad. You need to be able to pick up the phone and have a conversation if you don't understand something. You need to know when to ask questions and not make assumptions. And so, it's a lot of being open to lots of different perspectives and being able to pull that all together into something that serves as many needs as possible with limited resources.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, question number six, I'll be delivering. What do you most want the school division to accomplish, and how will you measure whether the division accomplishes it?
Oh, gosh. What have I not already said? Most accomplish? Our kids bring their whole selves to school. And so, I would want to see us look at other innovative approaches to how we can deliver education to kids, and it's thinking outside of the box, it's thinking outside of just your standard. There's an importance to our core classes, but there's an importance to everything else as well. And so, I would want to see how we take the whole child into account. I would, that would be a major thing for me. I've got kids who are, I've got a child in school that we find it hard even just to do extracurricular things, because we're working, they're, the, it's difficult to get on some of the athletic teams, and so that limits what they have. So, it's, and that's just on a personal basis, let alone anybody else. And so, I want to be able to see that our community is able to give what these kids need to bring them into school. Consider them all the way around. We've got a lot of kids who struggle with, with access to resources on a daily basis, and so, we have to be able to consider what each individual kid needs, so that they can come to school and learn. And that's really just taking the whole child into account. And that would be something that I would want to be looking at. And from a policy perspective, from a budget perspective, being able to be as efficient with the resources that we have, to be able to deliver those things in as efficient a way as possible would be my goal.
Thank you very much. Well, that concludes our questioning. So, I'd like to give you some time, we have some, here for you to provide any closing comments, if you'd like to.
Oh, that's so open-ended. I am about as entrenched in education as you can be without having ever taught in a classroom. My grandparents were band directors, my husband was a band director, my husband works as an administrator. My dad is a math teacher. My kids were graduate in schools, and so, education is something that's very close and near and dear to me. And like I said, it's a huge part of what we need as a society, and it's important to me. And I think that Norfolk Public Schools has something really special to offer, and I see us doing some really fantastic things. And as a civically president, I know how important it is to be out in the community, and as a chronic volunteer, I know how important it is to be involved in some way, shape, or form. And as a paralegal, I know all the legal ramifications of what we do. So, I think there's a lot that I can bring to the table and a perspective that someone that's not in education but understands education, is passionate about it, would be able to bring with a little bit of data flavor as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes our interview.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Is it on now? And there are six questions, and each one of us is going to ask you a question, okay? But before we do that, I'd like for you to introduce yourself, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Cookson. I am a resident of Norfolk, Virginia, in Ward Five. I currently work for the Council for Economic Education as their content manager for educational content. And the council is a nationally-recognized organization that works with K-12 teachers to help them teach economics and personal finance. It is a continuation of what I had been doing at Old Dominion University for the past 20 years, as the program manager and then the director of the Center for Economic Education, where I worked with Hampton Roads teachers to help them teach economics and personal finance. I was, at the very end, I retired from ODU and from the Virginia system after 30 years in August of 2022. In 2020, I was awarded the Bessie Moore Award by the National Association of Economic Educators for my work at ODU, and that award recognized my lasting contributions to economics and personal finance education. Prior to that, I taught for 10 years at Granby High School. It was Ms. Ruth Madden back then. Dr. Gabriel was one of my students.
Connection is now made now.
Yes. I have lived in Norfolk all, since 1986, for all of those years, except for one, where I was in Virginia Beach, and then came right on back to Norfolk, which I have lived here longer than I lived in New Jersey, where I'm from originally. And I am a product of public schools there. I have a niece that graduated from Granby High School, and I am a bonus grandma to a three-year-old, her birthday asen is today, and a one-year-old, Dominic.
Thank you very much. Okay. If you're ready, we'll go ahead with the questioning.
Sure.
And at first, we have a question from Ms. Tanya Basine.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. First question. So, the board has adopted a five-year strategic plan and recently, five highly-focused board and superintendent goals. What is your role as a school board member in ensuring that these goals are met?
Well, goals of equity for all, and excellence for all students. My role as a board member is to support families, teachers, and students in reaching those goals, to especially support teachers in any way that I can, as I have for the last 30 years, and, you know, making sure that the focus of those goals of excellence especially are, that the schools and the school board focus on those goals.
Okay. Thank you. Still writing. Okay. All right. Thank you. Up next, we have a question from Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My question is, what do you see as the major issue facing Norfolk Public School District? What changes would you recommend?
I think the, one of the major issues has to do with the lack of accreditation and... I think the, one of the major issues has to do with the lack of accreditation of schools, especially in science. And seeing those scores drop, whether that's COVID-related, which I'm sure it is, because science is all about hands-on and doing, and it's kind of hard to do that when you're doing it through a screen. And those students, and I think that improving those science scores, but also that is a, leads to a greater struggle with our students making up those years that they lost to COVID. And making sure that everybody is on track, getting them back on track, is, I think, the major issue of the school board and for Norfolk students. You know, we lost that time, and everyone did, across the whole country. And, but the science scores are not where they should be, and giving teachers the resources, the extra resources to make sure that those scores are back where they should be and back where they were.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have a question from Mr. Carlos Clanton.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
To maximize student achievement and outcomes, what is your view of an ideal board member and the board as a whole's relationship with the superintendent? How will you demonstrate your responsibility in this relationship?
Would you like him to read it again?
Yes, can you? I'm so sorry.
The loaded question is two-part. To maximize student achievement and outcomes, what is your view of an ideal board member and the board as a whole's relationship with the superintendent? And how will you demonstrate your responsibility in that relationship?
An ideal board member puts students and families first. An ideal board member helps teachers, gives them the tools that they need to make sure that our students are succeeding, whether that's through making sure that they have the resources and the budget that they need, making sure that resources go to where students need it. An ideal school board member is open to new ideas and takes into consideration the diversity So as far as a relationship for the superintendent, being able to counsel and guide the superintendent, to listen to what Dr. Birdsong needs, and being receptive to those needs.
Up next, we have a question from Dr. Noel Gabriel.
Hello. All right. Why do school systems exist, and what is the role of the school board member in that school system? And what is the role of the superintendent?
So let me, I get a, I don't know if I should get a little wonky. I have, you know, I've taught economics for a very long time and have a master's in economics as well as in secondary ed. The role of a school, and especially of public schools, I think, has to do with preparing students for life, preparing them to become responsible citizens. And, you know, public schools are a public good. They are, they exist because we need to make sure that everyone is educated and everyone has a chance and an equal chance at a, at a good future, whatever that means to that student and that family. And that's where our tax money goes, to ensure that. So what was the second part of your question?
What, what is the role of the school board member and the superintendent in that system?
Right, so the role of the school board and the superintendent, or the school board especially, is to getting the funds from the city council, making sure that those funds are distributed responsibly to hold the superintendent, again, like I had said, relationship of guidance, but also accountability, to ensure that the goals, those goals of equity and excellence.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have a question from Mr. Rodney Jordan.
I've got it.
It's okay.
School boards represent the vision and values of the community. What does this mean to you? And how will you represent the vision and values of the community in your work if you are selected to serve on the school board?
The visions and values of Norfolk are tied, I believe, into our role as the largest naval base, right? And the role of the military here is very important. That tied into that role of service as a community is very strong. Of wanting to make sure that every student is successful is part of that culture as My husband, who's out in the thing, is retired, retired from the Navy and the Air Force Reserve. So I do have some military experience in my back pocket, if not in firsthand knowledge. But Norfolk is made up of a whole bunch of really small little towns. And one of the things that I realized, being at Granby High School, was that I could walk into Ward's Corner when the farm fresh was there. And I had taught, one time, I had taught every single cashier. And that sense of community of a whole bunch of little, small towns all coming together is another important part of what makes Norfolk great, too. So whether we're from Ocean View, you know, or Bayview, or Azalea Gardens, or my little part of town, which is Terrleton, or, you know, the area where my students all came from, too, I felt like we knew each other in those, in those pockets. And each section of Norfolk has its own little, unique quirks and, and charm. As a school board, we reflect that, being from different wards, living in different parts of Norfolk, being from different parts of, being here all our lives, or coming from other parts of the country, because Norfolk is made up of a lot of people that come here, you know, that aren't necessarily local or have roots. But it's still important to have that sense of community.
Okay, thank you very much. And the final question, I will deliver.
Okay.
So what do you most want the school division to accomplish? And how will you measure whether the division accomplishes it?
There's a couple of things that I'd like to see accomplished. I've already talked about accreditation and making sure that standards, that our, that our schools are accredited, 100% accredited. I know that one of the things that Norfolk's been working on is absenteeism rate. I know as a classroom teacher how crucial it is to make sure that students are there learning every day, that they can be. I also know how difficult it is, because absenteeism sometimes has nothing to do whether a school student wants to be in school, but what's happening at home, and that's preventing them from being there. So as a school board and a school system, working on those underlying conditions that affect absenteeism, whether that's, you know, because a student was working the night before or has to stay home and take care of younger children when they're sick, or they don't have, they haven't been, they're hungry, or they don't have clean clothes, right? Or there's, don't have someone that gets them up in the morning to get here, or the transportation. So all of those things affect absenteeism, as well as absenteeism moves into accreditation. Like I said, you can't pass a class or a test unless you're there. Even as an instructor at ODU, I, you know, beg my students, just, just come to class. You could pass, I'll get you passed, just come to class. It's much harder to do with a college student. There are way more things that they'd rather be doing than sitting in an economics class, although by the end of the semester, I try and, try and get them to understand that economics is fun, although that's a hard sell sometimes, I think.
Thank you very much. That concludes our questions. So I'd like to give you the opportunity to give some closing remarks, if you'd like to do that.
I thought for a really long time about whether I should throw my hat in the ring and, and apply for this position. And I felt it was a natural conclusion to a career where I spent helping teachers, to be able to help them in a different way. In, right now, my job with the Council for Economic Education is remote, so I have the ability and time to, to vote, to devote to this act of service. I don't, I'm not sure if I should say this or not, but I, I don't think that I am political in a sense that, I don't see myself as running for this position, but wanting to fill in and be helpful until that next person comes. Don't hold that to me, don't hold me to that, though. If this is something that I, I love, I don't, I don't know what will happen next year. But again, that sense of giving back is something that has been very strong to me. When I first started teaching, I wished that I had someone like the director for the Center for Economic Education, which I became, to help with making social studies more active, more fun, more engaging. I wish that there was someone that I could go to and get free resources from. And I took that need for those resources and the desire to help into my career at the center, where it was the best job that I ever had, because I was there for teachers and helping them like I wish I had been helped back, way back in the 90s.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for giving me this opportunity. I'm very humbled by it, and I really appreciate it.
It's nice meeting you.
Nice to meet all of you, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Tanner.
Gabriel and Clanton?
Yes.
Okay. Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the city of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of the qualifications of specific applicants for temporary appointment to the school board seat for Ward Five. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisional legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A8 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is that set out above in subsection A. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye, thank you.
Can I get a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that we come out of closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Tanner, please call the rule.
A resolution certifying the executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification, requires certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, will therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in an executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton, what time he exit?
Um, six o'clock.
Okay. Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye, thank you.
It's six o'clock?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'd like to call this public hearing to order.
Dr. Martin, we have two individuals who signed up to speak before 6:00 PM for public comments today. Today's speakers have signed up for public comments before the start of today's public hearing. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the, well, you are required to share your public comments that you're addressing to the school board. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's mic right here in the middle. State your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you're employed by the district, and share your public comments. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position, give facts and relevant data, avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees, personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard-nps-k-12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at this time they are given, and any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. And Dr. Martin, our first speaker is Vicky Greco? No, I take that back. Barbara Blake, followed by Vicky Greco.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Blake. I'm a resident of Norfolk for about 20 years. Two of my kids graduated from Granby High School and Maury High School, and I have one remaining child at Maury High School. I'm also a member of the Career and Technical Education Committee through Norfolk Public Schools, and I am currently the executive director of the Monarch Internship and Co-op Office at Old Dominion University. I'll keep my comments quite brief. I'm here today to support Ruth Cookson as a candidate for Ward Five. You're talking about a lifelong educator. Previously at Granby High School, I worked with her quite closely in the Sturm College of Business at Old Dominion University. She was there for several years upon retirement, and now she is a national educator, teaching kids, supporting kids, supporting teachers through economic education. She She has lived in Ward Five, I want to say, for more than five years, but she's an excellent candidate and worthy of your highest recommendation and review. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've had Vicky Greco.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Martin, Ms. Moore Buffalo, and school board members and NPS stakeholders. My name is Vicky Manuga Greco. I'm a proud and what we call mature 1985 graduate of Lake Taylor High School, NPS parent and volunteer. I'm not a Ward Five resident, but I appreciate that our school board collectively makes policy decisions for the entire division in our NPS community. Each year, our students and families are asked to read, review, and acknowledge the receipt of the NPS Student Handbook, including the Standards of Student Conduct. Similarly, I, I anticipated that the school board had a recent code of conduct for board members. As far as my online document search went, I found a BBF Code of Ethics for board members, which was adopted by the board on December 19th, 1996, 20 years before our board became an elected school board. I also found a 2020 Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct for school board members. It's a template and it's, I'm not entirely sure that the Norfolk School Board has had an opportunity to review that particular VSBA Code of Conduct or consider updating the board code to reflect responsibilities of an elected school board. But I'll take this time now to say that the 1996 NPS Code of Ethics for school board members had all the following worded points, with the exception of this first VSBA code point. As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to approve public education. And to that end, and this is the one missing from NPS, I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and nation. The others were covered pretty much in the 1996 adopted ethics, Code of Ethics, but I'll read those from the VSBA code. I will attend scheduled board meetings. I will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators. I will encourage individuals' board member expression of opinion and establish an open, two-way communication process with all segments of the community. I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regs, regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information. I'm sorry, I always go over time. I make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board of administration, or administration, I'm sorry. I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state and National School Boards Association. I will also remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. And thank you so much for letting me say thank you for holding this public hearing and deliberating and appointing the most qualified candidate for the school board vacancy, no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this concludes our speakers, Dr. Martin.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here and have a safe trip home.
You adjourned a meeting?
Do, uh, vote on closing the public hearing or not?
We didn't vote on opening it.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, all right. Good.
All right, meeting adjourned. Public hearing adjourned.